All right, well, again, welcome, everybody, this evening. Thank you for being here. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Clarici.
Here.
Councilmember Gottberg.
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Here.
Vice Mayor No.
Here.
Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have a couple of ceremonial matters tonight. We have a couple of proclamations, and I'm very honored to be able to read those into the record tonight. The first one is item 3.1, which is the Memorial Day proclamation, and I'll go ahead and read that into the record. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Placerville declaring May 29, 2023 as Memorial Day at the Eldorado County Veterans Monument. Whereas Memorial Day, originally called Decoration Day, was first proclaimed by General John Logan, Commander in Chief for the Grand Army of the Republic on May 5, 1868, and was first observed on May 30 of that same year, General Logan made this proclamation to honor the soldiers who died during the Civil War, but also to bring all Americans back together. And whereas our great nation is founded on the ideals of liberty, and all individuals are created equal, and we, as free citizens, have called on our military to protect those ideals, and many have made the ultimate sacrifice and laid down their own lives in defense of our nation and her ideals. And whereas, as we honor their ultimate sacrifice, we must never forget our continued liberty and freedom is indeed not free, and it is our duty as citizens to uphold the principles they fought and died defending. And whereas, from the battlefields in Antietam, the trenches along the Somme, the beaches of Normandy, and the jungles of Vietnam, and the deserts of the Middle East, Americans have given their lives in the defense of our country and our unalienable rights. And whereas this Memorial Day, we honor all the Eldorado County veterans who died defending our freedoms. Now therefore, I, Michael Saragosa, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Placerville, State of California, do hereby proclaim May 29, 2023 as Memorial Day at the Eldorado County Veterans Monument. We stand here today proud and part of a grateful nation to pay our solemn respects to all those who gave the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our freedom and ideals. And again, I'll be very honored to be at the Veterans Memorial on the 29th, representing our City Council and the citizens of Placerville. Thank you. And we have one more proclamation tonight, and that's item 3.2, and that's to honor and celebrate National Public Works Week. And that proclamation reads, a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Placerville, proclaiming May 21 through the 27, 2023 National Public Works Week in the City of Placerville. And this reads, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the citizens and visitors of the City of Placerville. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our city's transportation, water supply, water treatment, storm drain, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for our citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Placerville to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public work programs in their respective communities. And whereas this year, 2023, marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Placerville does hereby proclaim May 21 through the 27, 2023 National Public Works Week in the City of Placerville. We urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life, and as stated, May 23, 2003. And again, if everybody would just join me and give me a hand to all of our employees that do a lot of great work, so, thank you. Okay. Any comments from anyone? All right. We'll go ahead, then, and thank you, everybody, and we will go ahead and file those, and move on to item four, closed session report. We don't have one this evening, so we'll move to item five, which is the adoption of the agenda.
I'll move to adopt.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to item six, announcements and presentations to the public. Item 6.1, brief comments by City Council. We'll start with Nicole.
I have nothing tonight.
All right. Mr. Clarici.
I have nothing tonight.
All right.
I have nothing tonight.
Ditto.
All right, well, let's keep the ball rolling. I have no comments tonight either, so there you go. And I might be a first. There we go, all right. All right, item 6.2. We have two, actually, two presentations this evening, item 6.2 and 6.3. So item 6.2 is consideration of Eldorado Disposal Waste Connections procurement of compost program to satisfy the city's requirements under Senate Bill 1383 and Assembly Bill 1985. And Mr. Rivas will have his report for us.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm just going to start with just a brief introduction to why we're hearing these proposals. Beginning in January 1 of 2022, Senate Bill 1383 was passed requiring every jurisdiction to procure annually a quantity of organic waste products. The amount of procurement, which is based on the city's population, is 871 tons per year. And then we have Assembly Bill 1985, which sets procurement targets at 30% of that amount to be achieved in 2023, 65% of that amount to be achieved in 2024, and 100% for 2025 for the calendar year. The total procurement amount is, would be 152 tons of organic waste product, in this case, finished compost. For fiscal year 2023, the total procurement amount is 544 tons, which include, would include all of calendar year 2023 and half of calendar year 2024. So there's a variety of different products that would be made available to the city to comply with Senate Bill 1383. For example, finished compost, mulch, biodiesel fuel, anaerobic digestion-generated energy, biomass diversion of compliant feedstock to a biomass electrical generation facility. So what we have before you is Eldorado Disposal is proposing to provide the city with high-quality organic waste. And so with that, unless the council has any specific questions of staff, I'm going to turn this over to some of the representatives with Eldorado Disposal to give us a presentation.
All right, thank you, Pierre. Is any questions at this moment? All right, come on forward.
My name is Nathan. I am a member of the community here at Placerville. Prior to working for Eldorado Disposal, I used to be a farmer, so compost has a certain place in my heart because, ask any farmer, I'm sorry to say, I don't think any of them have a bad opinion of compost. So with that being said... You lied to me. There it is, okay. So, we have 1383 mandate that has a little aspect of procurement. Procurement is the broad term, as Pierre said. It can be fulfilled through compost, through other energy means of reclaiming organic material and bringing it back fully secular. Compost happens to be, in my opinion, and in a lot of communities' opinions, the best way to do this. Eldorado Disposal is already producing compost at our facilities. We are producing compost with your waste already. Everyone's green cart that is going to composting facilities, all the meat, the bones, the vegetables, as well as all of your yard material is being turned into a useful commodity. We, logistically, have been looking at finding a way to bring that back to the community, and we think we have a plan in place. Logistically, it looks like we can bring compost back for $32 a ton, and brought directly to the City of Placerville for that price point. This is what the process looks like. It's already happening, and it has been happening for well over a year. Our trucks are collecting green waste, both in commercial businesses and residential green waste containers. It is going to a facility where they are pulling out things that aren't supposed to be there, they are shredding, and they are creating compost with anaerobic, excuse me, with static aerated piles. So in other words, they grind it after they've pulled out everything that's not supposed to be there. It sits there while air is injected underneath, creating a beautiful compost, which is then sifted, so you get exactly what you see on the left, a nice finished product, exactly as you would expect to get from a bag of compost you'd buy at a box store. A lot of the benefits of compost, again, if you want to ask your farmer, he'll tell you exactly all the benefits, but soil health is the biggest reason. Soil gets compacted over time, the nutrients get sucked up by grasses and by whatever you're growing in there. Especially our soils in our county are extremely poor. Most people know that they're definitely lacking a lot of organic material, causing a lot of problems. When you apply compost, you get better soil retention, which is huge for farmers, but also better water retention, excuse me. You also get increased yields, you get a better microbiome, which adds to better nutrient uptakes. There's a lot of good reason to apply compost, and virtually no bad reason if you're applying it correctly, assuming you have good quality compost, which we'll get to. Another reason for this is the perception of 1383. With recycling programs, people want to see a full circular economy with what you're recycling. If you're putting your aluminum cans in, you want to see it go in full circle and be melted down and made more aluminum cans here. And the same should apply to all the food waste that you throw out. It is a commodity, it is something tangible that can be used by farmers and by the public, and something that we can bring back and offer to the community. Beneficiaries, obviously, the residents. This program in Placerville kind of is aimed towards community sites where community members can come and pick up compost as needed throughout the year. Initially, it would be rolled out seasonally, but could be made available throughout the whole year, depending on the need, and the quantities, I think, are definitely doable. You also have community gardens, parks, local farms, small farmers, organic farmers just down the road. And then you also have public works, like Caltrans, who can use compost for site remediation and bringing back life and grass to sites that have been disturbed. And then golf courses, recreational sites also could utilize this. Excuse me. Cost, because compost comes in more potent to the CalRecycle calculator, there's about a 40% reduction in cost if we were compared to other plants. So cost-wise, if we're going off of the same 30, 65, 100% gradient that AB 1885, excuse me, requires, we would need to bring in 152 tons of compost to meet our 30% procurement goal this year, which is doable and feasible in our eyes, and continue to grow into 65, 100% compost in 2025 is definitely plausible, especially in considering the vast amount that the community, excuse me, that the county needs. It's more than tenfold the amount that the City of Placerville would need to procure. Oh, and last but not least, excuse me, I think I'm... There you go. Distribution, distribution would be hauled directly back. This is where the cost is most beneficial for everyone involved. It would be a direct haul from where the compost is made directly to a community site, bringing the cost down for all involved. The compost is managed by a Waste Connections facility, and this Waste Connections facility would also be responsible for presenting routine laboratory analysis of the compost to make sure that you know what you're getting. The compost is checked for biological activity, like fecal matter, which, you know, slips in because people don't always put their dog poo in the right area. And of course, for heavy metals, it's also looked at for general health, are the right nutritions there. So when you're applying this compost as a farmer or as a member of the public, and you're putting it into your plants, you want to know that it's not extremely high in one component and extremely lacking in another. You want some balance to the compost as well, and ours does. Our testing from a composting facility that's been open for almost a year shows that it is beautiful, high-quality compost, and we're even working on getting it certified organic as well. It is that good of a compost that we're proud of it. We want it in our community, I want it in my own garden, and I think a lot of the public would appreciate the same. So with that being said, is there any questions for me?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions at this point? Yes?
Yeah, sure, I'll ask a few. So I guess my main concern, obviously, the city has limited space and land, and, you know, I don't necessarily want to take parking lots or parks and turn them into compost transfer facilities. So I'm wondering, like, logistically, if we end up with either a small area and people are not picking it up, or agreements with private property owners to go direct from kind of you guys to a private owner, if there's interest from private owners, like farms, such that we never end up with compost accumulating on a city land.
So I've been talking to a few people within the county. Naturally, the Wine Association, I've been in the Wine Association and for 10 years, on and off, dealing with them. They're very excited, Wine Association. Just putting in perspective, these trucks would look like a 20-ton drop, and that is substantial. It is enough that it would be a line across this room of compost about as high as this. That truck would, initially, we would look like a composting facility, excuse me, a site within the community would need to accommodate that. But I do believe, looking at other areas within the state that have done programs like this, that the community need for this compost is going to be very, very big, and the community is going to just be dying to get their hands on it. 20 tons, well, a typical pickup bed would be half a ton of compost. So you're looking at a gigantic truck, it's only going to accommodate, you know, 40 guys with some shovels and want to, you know, put enough compost on their front lawn and spread it out and make it beautiful. Or, you know, one or two people who are kind of building up a garden, that's going to be a ton or two right there. So the compost will move pretty quickly. I don't even see the need to put limits on it initially, but the other side of the coin would be farmers. Farmers do want full truckloads. I've talked to them, I've explained, you know, what it would look like to them, and 20 tons on a farm seems pretty gigantic for a single farm, but if you're saying, you know, a 10-acre vineyard where the application rate is four to six tons per acre, you're going to need a couple of truckloads. And that's every single year, you could take a truckload onto your farm. So it's not, it's not some absurd number, especially at the city level. The city level, you're looking at seven truckloads this year. So a truck every other week is not some monument to compost, it's going to disappear, it's going to be utilized here. And then hopefully, in the future, we can partner with the county to take care of the farms in much larger volumes, but that's up to the county as well. So sorry, long end.
Great, any other questions? Any other questions? All right, we'll may call you back later, but thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you. I think what we'll do is we'll do both presentations, and then we'll open up public comment. Does that sound right? Okay. All right, so we'll move on to then item 6.3. Let me just, and that is to consider consideration of Pioneer Community Energy Organic Waste Procurement Compliance Program for Senate Bill 1383 for city requirements. And again, Mr. Rivas has his report for us.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this is a presentation from Pioneer Community Energy. They're a community-owned nonprofit provider of electricity, and they are proposing to sort of negotiate a contract with Greenleaf. They are a biomass energy production company, a very large company, and so they're looking at then taking care of the city's 1383 requirements through a process of acquiring biomass waste stream that would then, there's an equivalency to where we would purchase through them their waste stream to cover their costs, to cover for our requirements under 1383. So this one's a little bit more complicated, a little more moving parts. So with that, unless there's any specific questions, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the Pioneer representatives to give a presentation.
Thank you, Pierre. Any questions? Seeing none, all right. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to be here. My name is Kirsten Kulpicki, I'm with Pioneer Community Energy, and I just wanted to say, you know, this 1383 organic waste compliance is not in our daily jobs of what we do at Pioneer Community Energy. However, we did have members of our board come to us, and we're talking about this SB 1383 organic waste procurement requirement and their struggles with trying to meet the requirement, and they actually had us look into how biomass might be able to play a role in this, because they know that we have been very supportive of biomass procurement in our efforts. And so we dove into this issue, learning along the way, and so this is sort of what we have to present to you today. Just to go over some of the things we'll be talking about, SB 1383 and what its requirements are, which I think staff report has done a good job of going over, the procurement of biomass attributes by Greenleaf and what that means, and what the proposal is from Pioneer's perspective, what we get out of this, your jurisdictions' estimated targets and costs per year, we've run a cost comparison, estimated legal fees, and other considerations that the city might want to consider. So beginning in January 1 of 2022, SB 1383 requires cities and counties to procure annually a quantity of organic waste products based upon their population. Jurisdictions, again, are required to procure 30% in 2023, 65% of their targets in 2024, and then 2025, ongoing, it's 100% of their organic waste targets. There are four types of organic waste that comply: compost, mulch, anaerobic digestion, and what we're talking about tonight is electricity produced from biomass-compliant feedstock. So Greenleaf is collecting SB 1383 biomass-eligible material from local transfer stations, and then they're offering to sell the eligible attributes to local jurisdictions to comply with their procurement requirements. To be very clear, this isn't about procuring biomass energy in and of itself, this is about the attributes. So in Greenleaf's model, they are having transfer stations in their area take waste from their landfills to the biomass facility. They're using that organic waste to burn in their biomass facilities to create baseload renewable energy. And by taking that material out of the landfills, they're meeting SB 1383 requirements. Greenleaf has a contract already for their biomass energy. What they're doing is looking to sell then the compliant attributes, almost like a carbon credit. So at the end of the day, you will have a certificate of compliance in your hand, but you won't have a product that then you will have to figure out what to do with at the end of this journey. So Greenleaf is originally offering to sell one ton of SB 1383 compliant biomass material, which is the equivalent of 650 kilowatt-hours of biomass at $32.50. And so how did Pioneer get here, and what are we doing in this? So we are not charging jurisdictions for participation in this program, we are not benefiting financially from this program, we're not going to charge any of our customers to participate in this program. This is something that we've researched and are offering. The contract would be between jurisdictions and Greenleaf Power. We have just, as a community nonprofit, have decided to help negotiate and sort of have a Costco buying power, if you will, with Greenleaf, based upon having all of the jurisdictions being able to negotiate a template contract for jurisdictions, hopefully saving jurisdictions' staff time and money to try and negotiate this kind of contract. Next slide, we'll get a little bit into the targets. So it is a little bit more complicated than straight-up compost, but on the left side, you'll see what Placerville's 2022 energy usage is. And what that is, represents, is that jurisdictions have a maximum tons that they are allowed to procure based upon the energy that's used within the municipal jurisdiction itself. So for your city-owned buildings, the max you could procure. And under the calculations, the maximum tons that are procurable, using 2022 numbers, is 4,019 tons, which is well over what you guys are required to procure in tons. And the cost for 2023 would be approximately $8,483. If you move to 2024, again, those targets go up to 65%, 566 tons Placerville would require to procure. And again, in 2025, it moves up to 100% of your target at 871 tons, for a total of $28,308. We did a cost comparison, although it's awesome that we have the other waste facility being able to provide an option as well and a cost comparison. But on the left-hand side, you'll see that Greenleaf Power is offering this biomass, the biomass attributes at $3,250. With Placerville's 2023 target of 261 tons, that is an estimated cost of $8,473 for 2023. We would be charging an administrative fee that is simply the cost of our legal counsel negotiating the basic contract. That would be divided amongst all the jurisdictions that would be participating in this. We're estimating a low cost of $10,000 total for that and a high of 25, and I think at this point, we're looking at the lower end of that cost for that. We contacted Western Placer Waste Management Authority in Lincoln, who quoted $21 a ton for SB 1383 compliant compost. And so that total would be $5,481. But then there's the trucking costs, because that doesn't include any sort of trucking. Contacted JT Trucking that quoted $300 a trip with a 24-ton truck for 12 miles, although Placerville City Hall is 45 miles away from Western Placer Waste Management Facility, so the cost may be more. It would take 11 trips to haul the 261 tons at $300 a trip, for a total of $3,300, an estimated cost of $8,781. You'd also need to figure out what you wanted to do with those tons of compost. So we learned of a possible notice of violation from the EPA on May 10 with regards to Greenleaf Power, and since that time, we have been in touch with Greenleaf itself, CalRecycle, and our board members to notify them of this. The notice of violation is for alleged violations for hourly exceedances in stack tests in a period that covered 2016 to 2021. Greenleaf has indicated that they believe the ongoing discussions with EPA will result in either a significantly reduced or eliminated fine. CalRecycle, when we reached out to them and asked them how this would impact the viability of this proposal going forward if there was this notice of violation that remained out there, CalRecycle indicated that it will conduct compliance evaluation of jurisdictions, which will require written certification from the biomass conversion facility certifying that the feedstock came from eligible and permitted facilities. It doesn't have regulatory oversight over the biomass plant regarding this type of notice of violation, and the notice of violation, even if it results in a fine, will not impact the solution of applying attributes for compliance. With this information, staff will resume talks with Greenleaf to amend the contract to extend the original June 30 deadline to July 31 of this year, and include notification requirements and remedies regarding the outcome of the pending notice of violation and all other related violations. We expect to circulate the amended contract template towards the end of this month. We expect to circulate the amended contract template towards the end of this month. And some considerations that jurisdictions like yourself may want to consider. The price of compost and mulch, very wildly, Greenleaf has acknowledged to us that this isn't a solution for everyone. However, there are also a large variety of options for jurisdictions for those that are looking for short-term solutions. It's a possibility to go with this option. It's also a possibility to have both compost and biomass attributes for those jurisdictions that are saying, hey, we want to be able to have compost for our folks to pick up. But having 500 tons of compost every year may be beyond what a jurisdiction wants. They can satisfy that with a variety of these components here with compost, mulch, biomass attributes. Beginning January 1, 2027, jurisdictions' procurement targets are going to be recalculated based upon your population changes. And if jurisdictions have any grant money that they received under SB 1383, that can be used to procure the biomass attributes. Greenleaf has indicated they haven't signed any contracts as of yet, but they have been in discussions with several jurisdictions where if those jurisdictions were to procure their biomass attributes, they would be out of being able to sell the biomass attributes. So each jurisdiction should conduct their own fiscal analysis and determine their best option for compliance before signing a contract. The contract term is up to you, but Greenleaf expects a minimum of three years and prefers five years. Whatever term you choose, you have the option to terminate the contract with 60 days' notice in the event that there is a change in the law or regulations. The attorney fees will be shared equally amongst all participants, and that amount will likely be provided in August, once we know how many jurisdictions plan on participating. And it's up to each jurisdiction to negotiate any final provisions in the contract. At this point, we've negotiated three tiers of pricing based upon how many jurisdictions plan on participating. And so the high end of the three-year average, I think, is 32, 45, with tier two at $29.88. And tier three would be all of our jurisdictions participating, 27, 30. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirsten. Any questions at this point? David, I know you've worked on this issue.
He's listening. He discussed on this issue a little bit, yeah.
I don't know if you have one to make any comments at this point.
Yeah, let's let the public comment. If you come back to ask me.
All right, great. Okay. So with that, then, we will go ahead and open up public comment on item 6.2 and 6.3. All right. Seeing no public. Oh, we have a taker.
Good evening, Mayor Saragossa and members of the council. Kathy Lishman, Placerville resident. It was good to hear the presentations, but it was also good to read the staff reports. I appreciate the information we got. While everyone is a customer of Eldorado Disposal, not everyone is a customer of Pioneer. And it seems to me that the best program for the community and the environment is the program proposed by Eldorado Disposal. The idea of composting eventually being certified organic is an extra plus and a real benefit to farmers and homeowners. I would appreciate having the composting in my garden. And I know as a community pride volunteer that all of the community pride volunteers who work on public property to maintain and build gardens would be happy to have it, and it would actually save the city money from buying some. If we found we have more composting than we can use, we can look possibly at adapting and having part this program, part Eldorado Disposal, and then part biomass. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening.
Good evening, council and mayor. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Tracy Cilio, and I oversee the UC Master Gardener Program in Eldorado County. And the Master Gardener's mission is to teach community members about sustainable landscape and gardening practices backed by research through the University of California. Last year, Master Gardeners taught three classes and held two public outreach events on the topic of compost for the public, and these classes had over 300 attendees. Compost classes are some of the most popular that we offer across the county. When we evaluate the attendees after our classes, we find that 80% are actually utilizing either home compost building or the use of mulch in their home landscapes. These techniques, amending soil and mulching with compost, preserve water, conserve water, and reduce waste in the use of chemicals and fertilizer products. If the city decides to move forward with some kind of compost pickup program, Master Gardeners will continue our partnership with Eldorado Disposal, with Eldorado County Waste Management, and continue to teach our community members about the uses and values of compost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council. Sue Rodman, Placerville resident. Well, I read both of the proposals, and it seems to me that for half the cost is Eldorado Disposal, is only charging us half the cost of the other proposal. The other proposal from Pioneer Electric is twice as expensive. And Eldorado Disposal, where we put the compost, now that is the problem I see is, all right, where are we going to put this so that people can come and pick it up? And how is the city going to prevent this from becoming a mess? So those would be my questions. I think the city needs to really look hard at both of these proposals. But on cost basis alone, Eldorado Disposal seems to have it hands down. But there is an expense to finding a place to put the compost and how to make sure that it remains something that's clean and people can come and pick up the compost that they want without having it turn into just a huge mess. So our public work people may have even more to do.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council for further discussion.
If you guys have anything at this point?
We want to know your thoughts.
Yeah, we want to know your.
Here we go. All right. Since, you know, I got into Pioneer Energy and sit on the Board of Directors and thought I was dealing with power, I never thought I'd be dealing with compost. So anyway, yeah, so there are a few questions out there that the public definitely has and that I have at the same. Cost difference-wise, you know, just by looking at the two different proposals, there is quite a big swing. I mean, 2025, there's a $12,000-plus swing when it comes to the two different proposals. So some of these questions are going to be directed back at Eldorado Disposal and its staff. Obviously, one would be location of where we're going to put the compost. So I'm not quite sure if Eldorado Disposal has already decided a place to do that, or if, Pierre, that, you know, the city's looking to see what we have available for putting this compost in.
City is currently looking for a location within the city limits.
Okay.
As a staging area for the compost.
Jeff England, Eldorado Disposal Site Manager, Transfer Station. We are not in a position to house the compost at the transfer station while we're under construction.
Gotcha.
Beyond that, all kinds of great possibilities exist.
Okay.
For the transfer station as a potential site. And I'm not saying we've got tons and tons of room.
Right.
But we're very good at adapting programs to the space and the areas that we have, and we do foresee an opportunity there. We simply can't do it while we're under construction for the next year and a half or so.
Okay. So and you guys are also dealing with Eldorado as a county with this same program, correct?
Precisely.
Okay. Great, thank you. The other thing that I wanted to direct you, for you, Pierre, is estimated, if any, cost for management by city staff for managing this program.
Yeah, it's too early. You know, all of this came sort of.
Right.
Late.
Very quickly.
And so, you know, we've been analyzing it, and we're still trying to analyze exactly the logistics of the material coming in and then where it's going to go, what staff would be involved in moving it and managing the site where then the general public would be able to come and procure the material.
Okay. Any comments on that, Nick? Because you know it's going to trickle down, right?
We're happy to do whatever we can to help.
Okay. Good save.
Just so the council is aware, staff has been looking at other programs at other cities, mainly, I personally have been looking at City of Berkeley, City of El Cerrito, some of those Bay Area cities, and how they've been dealing with their compost. They've been doing this for quite a long time. So visited the site, consulting with their staff. Hopefully, I'll come back with a better answer to that question with further research.
Okay. And just a little something else that I've had spinning around in my head with this program is the fact that, you know, we do have not only mom-and-pops, but big box stores that sell compost. And, you know, how is that going to affect, you know, their businesses and, of course, you know, the tax revenue that helps keep the city running and that sort of thing? And just for the public's knowledge, you know, this compost will not be for sale from the city. It is a free product. So it's not something that the city will be using to make any money off of. It will just be a public program. I personally think that the public will more than definitely use up the compost that we bring in, especially when it comes to even the farmers that we have, the local ones, whether it's the schools, the people, you know, anybody who wants to come get it. I don't think we're going to have a problem, you know, dispersing this compost at any point in time, especially with, you know, the limited amount that the city is going to be having to procure. The county itself is going to be a different story, so there will be a little bit of competition there. But I believe the county will probably reach out a little bit more to the bigger farmers and have a little more farther reach with that than we will. But anyway, at that point, there's my.
Knowledge.
Little bit of knowledge on this in-depth project that I've been submerged in for the last couple of months.
All right. Thank you, David.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts, questions at this point? I mean, I do think 500 tons of compost by 2025 will be an interesting challenge to house as we move forward. I do think some of it will move, but to Nicole's point, I do worry about yearly 500 tons or more because that number will, I assume, continue to move up potentially with population or however it gets calculated. So that will be an issue. And then the other thing, of course, is, again, this is another state unfunded mandate that, you know, we have to take care of as a local jurisdiction because this bill was passed. So it's up to us to figure out how to do it for, hopefully, the least expensive choice, but also the most realistic in terms of what we can handle as a city. So all those things have to be weighed.
Yeah, I would just add, you know, I like the idea of compost as long as we can do it in a way that both doesn't sort of impact beneficial use of current property, right? Like, I don't want to take away parking. I don't want to take away uses of parks, you know, like, so I think, you know, I think that's an important thing, that we find a location that works. I mean, the first thought that comes to my head, although maybe it's outside the city limits, is the old city dump property on Highway 49. But so I think if we can work out the logistics and not accumulate piles of compost, I think when you start getting a large pile of compost, there's all sorts of, you know, environmental issues and things like that. I work on a compost transfer facility down in the Central Valley that the Regional Water Quality Control Board is regulating and making them put in, you know, groundwater monitoring devices and all sorts of other things, which if you're talking about a 20-pound or 20-ton truck load, that's fine. But if we start getting, you know, 500 tons accumulated that are not picked up, that's a whole different story. So that's my input.
Thank you, Nicole. And those are all things we have to consider as we move forward with this. It's all uncharted territory. So Pierre, thank you for your due diligence on the front end for those cities that are already sort of doing this before it became state law. And, you know, we'll see where we go from here. Question, Pierre, what's our deadline where we have to sort of make a decision on which way we go?
I didn't really see a hard and fast deadline. Basically, we were looking at Assembly Bill 1985, which basically provides those targets. So before that, it was really up in the air. I'm sure there were so many jurisdictions that weren't really meeting their obligations that they pass that bill. So it's 30%, 2023, and then it goes up to 65, and then 100% from there. So I'm not sure how harsh CalRecycle would come down on a jurisdiction that wasn't meeting those targets. But I would suspect that if they evaluate the programs and the jurisdiction is making due diligence in compliance, I think they're not going to really come down hard on us. They'll probably try and assist.
Understood.
I would assume.
I have a question. How many homes are there in town presently, ballpark it, about?
Oh, gosh.
1,000, 2,000, 3,000?
2,000, something.
2,000. So if you have 500, is that what we're talking about, 500 tons?
By 2025.
By 2025, each house would have to get 2,000. Help me with 500? Rough numbers.
Tonnage?
400 pounds.
Oh, pounds, yes.
I think you're also going to have the outskirts of the city residents coming in.
Well, no, no, no. Yeah, no, I don't want to. Certainly, nobody in this room wants to listen to my streams of consciousness too much here. But, you know, I always like to put things into numbers that I can kind of wrap my brain around right at the beginning. And so, yeah, so if there's 2,000 residences, each one says, and every one of them goes and buys or buys, goes and gets some of the mulch, and they all distribute it equally, they'll all be getting basically a truckload, a good, like a 150 or your Dodge Ram 1500, I'm sorry if I don't mention all the truck names out there, bedload full of mulch. So does that seem insurmountable? You don't need to answer that question, but just a thought.
I was just trying to think of the number.
It's a thought experiment.
For the county. So you got 190,000 people in the county. We're at 10,000, and we're at 500 tons. I mean, they're going to have a lot of compost in the county.
Oh, the county's screwed, but we don't care. I don't live in.
Other people are taking it. They're going to have plenty of.
Yeah, I don't live in.
Other folks.
Yeah, but we're nice and centrally located.
It's true.
You know.
And we love.
Convenience, and we can do outreach and advertising, and I think it's at a benefit to the residents.
No, no, I'm not arguing compost is wonderful, but I'm just saying, you know, can you, everybody in town do one truckload full of, you know, that number I can actually kind of wrap my brain around.
I think we're going to feel our way through it as we go through it.
I think you're absolutely right. I think you're absolutely right. I think it will be a voyage of discovery in compost land. Actually, someone's got an answer to a question.
Could I ask a little easier question?
Yes, that would be great.
So about one ton of compost is about two yards. Your average, you know, truck bed is about a yard.
Yeah.
If you need 500 tons, and this is three years from now, not now, so after we have time to build this program, 500 tons would look like about 1,000 pickup trucks over the course of a year, 1,000 residences, not just within Placerville. And there's about 3,500 residences-ish according in Placerville alone, but the county, as you know, is much bigger. And then the way we're hoping to sell this to the county is Placerville is the community pickup site. So you know you're going to get people from outside of your limits coming and getting your compost. But in the same senses, the farms that are within the county, they're going to get county compost, and they're going to get the 20 tons direct. And that's just the way that we're hoping. We're hoping to get the big farm fish and your grazers, people who will take not just the truckload a year, but, you know, farms that'll take a couple of truckloads a year, large cattle lands, which we have in this county, that, you know, you're spreading a couple of tons per acre times hundreds of acres. The compost will move in the farm sense, and the compost will definitely move in the public sense. I think it could be not enough. As we've seen in other jurisdictions, in the jurisdictions in the Bay Area, there's not enough procurement to meet the demand. The bays are empty half the time, and the people flock to the bays when they hear that there's a compost truck. And this really happens. And per 1383, just so you guys know, the procurement rate, that number, that ratios that you're always hearing, it's .08. The compost will move in the farm sense, and the compost will definitely move in the public sense. I think it could be not enough. As we've seen in other jurisdictions, in the jurisdictions in the Bay Area, there's not enough procurement to meet the demand. The bays are empty half the time, and the people flock to the bays when they hear that there's a compost truck, and this really happens. And per 1383, just so you guys know, the procurement rate, that number, that ratios that you're always hearing, it's .08 tons per resident based off of your population, so like 160 pounds of compost per resident, which is crazy, until you go to the garden store and you lift up a 50-pound bag, so that's three bags per resident. It's not insurmountable.
It's not much.
Understood, thank you.
He has assuaged my fear.
Yeah, so I mean, also, which you got to consider, too, because, you know, it's not just the residents that are going to pick this up, but you got residents that own landscaping companies, you got
Yeah, 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 no, no.
So, I think, personally, I think it's going to get used.
Bring it.
I know how much I spent on compost last year for the garden, so.
Bring the compost.
All right. Well, again, thank you for all the public comments, and thank you to Pioneer and Eldorado Disposal for coming out and making the presentations. Lots for us to consider, but this is very helpful for us, and will give us some time for staff to come and bring us back a, you know, a proposal, and, you know, we'll go from there, but I think sooner rather than later, as, you know, we're well into our 2023, so we'll need to come to a decision rather quickly. Again, thank you, everybody, appreciate it. Okay, and I know it's not on the schedule here, but we wanted to ask staff to give an update on the sewer laterals as well.
Yes, I just want to update the council and the public that tomorrow evening we'll be having our public workshop on private sewer lateral and common laterals, and so that's going to be here in this room, Town Hall, from 6:00 to 8:00, and we encourage everybody to attend.
Great. Thank you, Pierre. All right, moving along, we'll move to the consent calendar. Note, all matters listed under consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Any items council would like to remove, clarification? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and open up the consent calendar for public comment.
Ryan Carter. I just wanted to express how ludicrous I think it is that the city is being required to pay $61,640 on some phantom aquatic resource credits to mitigate a phantom impact on .06 acres of streambed habitat from the Trails project. I also think it's ludicrous to deny a construction contract based partially on a company's disadvantaged business enterprise score, not their merit and how they build things. I just want to point out that both of these are cautionary tales of accepting state and federal grant funds, so just going to keep hammering on that as long as we keep taking that money and we keep paying the price for it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Council members, chiefs, how are you? Bill Roby, Eldorado Community Foundation, just wanted to let the council know that the foundation does have a parcel of land in the city of Placerville for your compost. And Project Green, which is in Buckeye School District, could use a lot of the compost, so they're at five different schools with garden projects. That's it.
Thank you, Bill.
Sue Rodman, and I read through 7.5 and 7.6, and it seems like we are trapped somewhat by the laws that we are stuck with. This is more unfunded mandates, and, but, we have gotten a Broadway sidewalks project done that there's no other way we would have gotten it done, because we needed the grant money and the money that came from the state and the federal to be able to do this project, and I think that our engineering department has done an amazing job to get this as reasonable as they possibly can. The Clean Water Act has some pretty strict things in it, and we all want to have clean water to drink, and so the problem is that sometimes it goes further than we would like it to go, but on the other hand, if it didn't do its job, we would still have rivers that burned like they did before the Clean Water Act was enacted. So I think that our engineering has done the very best that could possibly be done under the circumstances, and anytime you only get one bid on a project, I think that's a little bit dicey anyway, you want to make, you really want three bids, so I would support them going out for a rebid on it and see if they get something better.
All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment. Rebecca, on that, I know we talked about this DVB before, but you want to just clarify on that item?
Certainly. So there was a couple of factors why we're recommending the rejection of the singular bid, you know, why it's not in the public's best interest actually to award that contract. In looking at how the bid was received and the value, it exceeded the engineer's estimate, and it also challenged us in terms of how much funding we had available. There was a couple other components within their proposal that I won't go into the details of it, but once it was presented to Caltrans, they also then made the supplementary recommendation that we reject and rebid the project.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a comment regarding item 7.6.
Yes.
So I had a similar question that was raised earlier about the cost of the credits as compared to the mitigation, and I asked Ms. Neves what it would cost to construct the actual improvements to mitigate those things, and just the design cost would be approximately $60,000. So if you combine that and construction, it would actually far exceed what the unloot credit is, so it's actually saving the city money.
Understood, thank you. Okay, so with that, thank you both. Any other further questions on the consent calendar, any comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt.
I'll second.
First and a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Noe?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, item eight, moving on to the public comment portion of the agenda. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda, and that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. The mayor reserves the right to limit speakers to three minutes, which we do, and you are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous and/or which may invite individuals' personal privacy. So we will go ahead and start with public comments, and item 8.1, which are oral communications, so I'll go ahead and, please come on forward.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to state for the record, over here, city clerk, that I received a voicemail today from a Placerville city resident by the name of Deborah Lee. Her comment was in support of the Green Room Social Club. I provided hard copies, I transcribed it and provided hard copies to the full city council as well as the public. I placed copies on the back table for all in attendance tonight. Thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you, Regina.
Ruth Carter, city of Placerville, and I'm here on behalf of Farm Trails. Mike Owen couldn't be here tonight, but he wanted to express our gratitude from the board and the city's response in making sure that we were able to come to an agreement for this year's farmer's market, and we appreciate all the hard work and efforts that everybody put in good faith to move forward, so just wanted to say thank you all for your input and for making this happen for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk, I have some handouts for the dais. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Joseph Connelly, I'm an Eldorado County resident, and I'm here to give you notice that I'm intending to file a formal complaint against Placerville Planning Commissioner Ryan Carter by the end of the week, and I have a copy of the cover page, which I'm going to read to you for the record tonight. It says, "Dear Mayor Saragosa and Placerville City Council Members, pursuant to the relevant authority of the Placerville City Code, I respectfully ask you to remove Planning Commissioner Ryan Carter for acts outside the purpose and scope of his appointment to the Placerville Planning Commission. This complaint documents improper acts by Carter that appear to violate ethical, legal, and governing standards, including the city's strategic plan and code of ethics, California state law regarding unlawful discrimination against protected classes of persons based upon their personal characteristics or perceived characteristics, and the Eldorado County Board of Supervisors' governing principle to not tolerate unlawful discrimination against these classes as part of the county's strategic goals. Commissioner Carter's recent acts and other evidence of his clear bias against whole classes of Eldorado County citizens add up to portray a city official who discriminates against others at will based upon his personal beliefs, and that included urging people to come here today to speak out on those beliefs. These personal acts are a gross abuse of the public trust, they are a very poor reflection upon the city of Placerville and Eldorado County government. Finally, based on Councilmember Yarborough's apparent friendships with Commissioner Carter and others who support Carter's improper acts, I call upon him to recuse himself from this matter in the best interests of the city of Placerville in order to avoid the perception of a conflict of interest." And that public complaint will include all the details that I'm referring to here. As a point of order, if you would allow me public comment on item 3.1, that was an agenda item, I'd like to comment on it separately regarding the Memorial Day item.
No, that item already passed.
Okay, then I would use my remaining time to point out that I'm wearing a shirt, and let me just show it to you, it says Equality, Family, Work, and Life. This is a shirt that I had made to support transgender families and children in the Rockland School District a few years ago. I did that because I have transgender family members, and I'm a believer in equality for all citizens, and that we shouldn't discriminate against them based on who we believe they are or should be, that's different from our own beliefs. I spoke out against them, and I wore this shirt, and to defend the right of that child to have a free education, free from discrimination, and of the family to be free from the public abuse that they endured. That's an issue that's ongoing on a daily basis. There's a tremendous amount of work against that in this country right now, and I hope you stand up against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Lishman, resident of Placerville. I wanted to mention, though, that as far as the Memorial Day thing, both of the resolutions, you never opened it up to the public if anybody had a comment to make on that, and I wanted to remind everybody that the city of Placerville has its own veteran memorial, our Vietnam Memorial, right down at the end of the street, at the Monument Garden, at the corner of Main Street and Bedford Avenue, right across from the courthouse, and we are honoring, there's no ceremony going to happen there, but the monument is in honor of local young men who lost their life due to the Vietnam War. I also wanted to mention, when I got home from the last council meeting and the discussion about the Christmas tree, my husband said, "Can you take a look at possibly having a big tree?" We talked about that, bringing in a big tree, "on the left side of the courthouse." There's no lawn anymore, but the courthouse, because the road curves there, and you can see, you can see that spot from down the street, and you can see it from up here looking toward the courthouse, too, so thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, and yes, you're absolutely right, I didn't open up 3.1, so if anyone does have comments, I apologize to the sir up front, because I didn't open it up, so.
May I speak about that argument?
We'll keep going, and then, yes.
Ruth Carter, again, city of Placerville. I'd like to point out that I have been a longtime supporter from day one of the Green Room Social Club, and the reason that we asked for community support was because there have been all ages inappropriate programs going on, which were broadcast over loud speakers during the middle of the day on Main Street, and I don't believe that anybody is aware of this, and I don't believe that they're aware of the ordinances that are being violated. All I asked for was that these events be 21 and over. That was it. They changed that, that was enough for me, and now we're being personally attacked. So I would like to point out that you may want to look further at these events because they are not being discriminatory. I have a trans stepchild. I am very accepting, we have a lot of gay friends, there is no issue there, they're making it into victim attacks, and it is not that. I asked for something that was not all ages appropriate to be considered as a 21 and up event, that was it. Thank you.
Sue Rodman, I'm a Placerville resident, and I'd like to bring up our Christmas tree one more time, and Councilmember Clarici is correct, that tree is not going to get much taller, but it will get wider, and the reality is that they should have never planted a tree that was going to get that big in that small a space, it's too confined a space, but it's there, and it's been our Placerville Christmas tree for a long time, and anybody know the story of the Charlie Brown Christmas tree? Well, I think we have our own Charlie Brown Christmas tree, and that Christmas tree has never looked like the traditional pyramidal Christmas tree, but it has been our Christmas tree for years and years, so I would say, let's keep it. It can be our Charlie Brown Christmas tree, we'll put our lights and decorations on it, and it can be our Christmas tree for as long as it's feasible to do so. We need to prune it, we need to get rid of the branches that are broken, but I see no reason why we couldn't continue to have it be our Christmas tree. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comments, if you want to come back up? Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make this public comment regarding to item 3.1, the Memorial Day proclamation, on behalf of all the citizens of Placerville and of Eldorado County. If you saw the story in the Mountain Democrat recently, that's two VFW members, and the gentleman on the right of this photo, his name is Donald Morgan, he's a Navy veteran from the Vietnam War, he's been a member of the VFW post here in Placerville since 1983, and for the last 40 years, he's been involved in just about every veterans issue that you can imagine, color guards, memorial dedications, and for those 40 years, planting flags at two city cemeteries, at Union Street, Union Cemetery on B Street, and also at Westwood Memorial Park and Cold Springs Road. He's also my father-in-law for the last 11 years, and I'm a retired Coast Guard veteran of 25 years' service as well, who entered the service here in Placerville when I was a ponderous high school graduate. I do that flag placement and pick-up with him for the last 11 years, because I believe in that as a veteran, and the values and virtues of Memorial Day. And I'm inviting you personally, the members of the city council, to come and join us to honor Don Morgan on Saturday, the 27th, at Memorial Park, as we gather there together at 10:00 AM to place flags, and also on the 30th, to pick up those flags. This is a lot of work that goes into placing those flags at each cemetery, but every veteran's grave is marked with a flag, and it is remarkable to see those cemeteries, and they do it early so that the public can spend that time amongst those veterans being so honored throughout the whole Memorial Day holiday, not just on the ceremony at the Veterans Monument. I would like you to meet Don Morgan, and if you come to Union Cemetery, where I typically work, I would like to introduce you to two specific veterans, the Tixman Brothers from Diamond Springs. They were two young men in their 20s who died in combat, one was a Marine Corps Private First Class who died in a Japanese POW camp. His brother was a B-17 pilot, a first lieutenant, who died in an airplane training crash here in the United States. They were brothers in arms and brothers in life, and they're buried side by side at Union Cemetery in B Street, and it would be my honor to introduce you to them. In their family, they had two other brothers who also served during World War II, both survived that, and they're both deceased, but there are many, many stories like the Tixman Brothers that you deserve to know and to see and to honor in person, and we would be grateful and honored if you would join us, and to thank somebody who has been doing this for 40 years, simply because it matters to him as a veteran. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Hi, Leo Bennett, Koschan. I have the honor of being here again, year later, to let you know that we're so enthused that the that the wagon train event is returning to Main Street. It'll be on June 10th, from 9:00 until 4:00. And I have my colleagues here. We're going to start with Greg, that's up by the courthouse, because we're slipping in, and so far I've heard everybody's happy, an antique fair. Greg?
It's Greg Rezak, Placerville Antiques and Collectibles. We have secured 26 spots from Empire Antiques down to the Brick House, and it's, or Bricks, I should say. And it should be pretty exciting to actually have an event with the street closure. And there's more going on at the other end of the street.
Maria?
Yeah, I'm coming up.
So some of our folks are just really great, except in public. So I'm filling in for Maria and Ally. Ally's driving back and forth to LA. You'll notice that they're the younger demographic, yay, and they're going to do an awesome job at the Bell Tower. They're bringing in a really great band. I'm going to mess it up, but Boca, duh, Rio. But anyway, they do salsa and all that, so please, come, dance! And that'll be at 3:00. And then, as the entertainment continues, both during the antique fair and then after the entertainment, we're going to have living history performers and a bunch of different booths. And Margie's going to talk about the history component.
So I'm not a performer, so don't expect that. But I do want to thank you all for letting us do this again. We did it last year at Benham Park, and it turned out to be really, it was really a fun event, and plus, we had the bonus of having shade trees, which, now that we're on Main Street, we won't have that, but we're still trying to accommodate everything we did then and do it now. My particular booth is the Californios, which I can relate to, and what I'm trying to do is make it fun, and we're going to have games, and guessing games, and raffles, and prizes. So be sure to come. My hope is that all of you, you know, will feel enough interest and pride in what we're doing to be able to come. I know we can do a better representation in the future of the history of what happened during those Gold Rush days, but we're doing the best we can right now with the people that we've been able to gather together. So, to kind of entice you, I brought this map. Actually, can I pass out, I have five maps for the council members, can I?
Yeah, Regina will grab them for me.
So, this is one of my favorite shticks, okay? So you all are now sitting in occupied Mexico, and this map will show you, and you can actually locate where you are, and you'll see that this was Mexico until gold was discovered. And then, lo and behold, things changed because there was money involved. I guess my point in saying that, and why I relish that, is because what it means is that we're all immigrants. And when, when we work to understand each other better, we can share better the value of each other, and, you know, how, what we mean to each other. I do this sometimes, I'm sorry. But, you know, it's real, and it's a real thing, and it affects the green room issues. It affects all kinds of things that are going on. We need to stop hating each other, and we need to try to understand each other better and work together. And my goal and ambition in doing this Californios table is part of that. You know, here we have a beautiful heritage that is part of California. That's why you have the name California and Montana, and, you know, all these other names that are Spanish, is because we are all in occupied Mexico, and it's a wonderful thing. So, that's, that's it. So I want to thank you, and I hope you do all show up. I'm looking forward to that, see you.
Thank you.
So to wrap things up, I have the history of the various immigrants that came by wagon. Some came by boat, lots of different ways. I had the pleasure of riding last year, and we'll be riding with them this year. Folks came from other places, China and Russia, and we have some representation for that. We have an awesome committee of 10 folk. We have James, who's representing and leading the Native American community. You met Margie with the Californios. Michael Saunders, that you know, he's working with the Buffalo Soldiers and other representations of the black folk. We have Kathy, who is bringing people here that'll do living history. You met Greg in history. I mean, antique fair, Maria and Ally, who are doing the entertainment. And Ruth, you all know Ruth, she's holding us all together. So again, I hope you all come, and I have permission not to shave, because I'm going to be Horace Greeley, the wonderful publisher, and I found out there's a thing called a chin beard. I didn't even know that. Neck beard, I'm sorry. And he came here in 1859, gave a speech at the Carey House, and that generated the story by Mark Twain called Roughing It by the stage driver Hank Monk. History everywhere, lots of golden nuggets, please.
All right, thank you, Leo. Any other further comments, public comments?
My name's Max Storten, pardon me, resident of Placerville. I've come to the council numerous times to complain about the same thing. Nothing has happened. It's been almost two years now that someone came to town, renovated one of the historic buildings in historic part of Placerville, didn't have building permits, put in multiple units. I've been told by code enforcement, by every official, the mayor, the city council, city manager, everybody has told me, yeah, this can't happen, this will not happen, it can't happen. It's happening. It's still, I walked by tonight, there's a multi-unit apartment building right at the intersection of Spring and Bedford. It was illegally renovated, and it's now rented out to a large number of people, and it's a traffic hazard. There's multiple cars, multiple depths over the weekends, and I don't know where to go. I don't know who to talk to. I've talked to council members, I've talked to everybody I know, and I've had really awful emails sent to me by the staff of the city, telling me that I'm harassing them, I'm threatening them. No, I really just want the rules to be followed, and I don't understand how to get that done. I've complained numerous, numerous, numerous times. I've come to this council and complained. No one seems to be interested. So if anyone decides to be interested, I'm happy to tell them the story and see if there's any solution in anywhere on the horizon. I don't think there is.
Thank you.
Ryan Carter, City of Placerville, speaking only as a citizen and in no other official. And I would like to point out that according to the city handbook on commissions and committees, we are not excluded from advocating for, as citizens of the community, for things that we think are important. We are allowed to do that. And I welcome anybody looking into my record, because you will find nothing that is untoward. I'm very proud of that. So, anyway, just get that out of the way real quick. So John Adams said that we are a nation of laws and not of men, and so that's what I'm here to talk to you about tonight. I've printed out and given the clerk relevant city code sections and zoning ordinances that I'm going to talk to you about tonight. First, I'd like to express my appreciation to the Green Room for changing the age requirement for their Pride Night show. Now that we are aware that this show exists, there are issues, though, that need to be addressed. First of all, chapter 23 of, or sorry, Title V, Chapter 23 of our city code defines adult-related establishments as adult theater or cabaret, or any other business or establishment which has available or offers any patron, for compensation, any activities which involve display of specified anatomical areas. There is a publicly available video on YouTube of a, of the Green Room, where there is a dancer with, I'm sorry, I should, so the specified anatomical areas include bottom and top, obviously, but it does specifically list buttocks as an area. So there's a video available on Facebook of a dancer with bare buttocks, with dollars in their G-string. So according to city code, this business shall now be defined as an adult-related establishment. Along with that comes the necessity to not allow minors on that location. It also requires a license. Section 52313, it is unlawful for any person to operate or conduct an adult-related establishment unless under the authority of a valid, unexpired, unrevoked business license issued pursuant to provisions of this chapter. Zoning ordinances. Title X zoning, this is really important. In adopting this chapter, it is recognized that certain types of adult-related establishments possess certain objectionable operational characteristics which will have adverse effects upon the character of the areas in which we, they do business in adjacent neighborhoods. This is codified into city code. It is further recognized that locating adult-related establishments in close proximity to facilities frequented by minors will cause the exposure of minors to adult material which may adversely affect such minors. Again, codified in city code. So, adult-related establishments are permitted only in areas with C zoning classification. No such establishments shall be permitted to be established in any area outside zoning classification C. That is section 1096. 251 Main Street is zoned as Central Business District, CBD. It is not a commercially zoned parcel, thus this business is not allowed there as it's currently running. Also, according to 1097, an adult-related business cannot be located within 500 feet of any area zoned for residential use, or within 1,000 feet of any public park, that's 1097, or a religious institution or school. It's also violating all three of those. I'm asking the city, I will be asking the city to be issuing a letter of noncompliance to this business until they get back in line with established city code and zoning ordinances, which are law. Nothing personal, we're not talking about the people, we're talking about the laws that are established in this city that need to be followed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually have been to a show, I went to a show with you, Clarici, at the Ketchup and Mustard Building, and Gavin did a show there, and it was actually fabulous. I'm pretty sure you were there, pretty sure. I may be wrong, but it was a great show, and I laughed my butt off, and I just adore Gavin. And with that being said, it had adult content. And I would have felt uncomfortable watching that show with any of your children or your grandchildren. I would also be uncomfortable excessively drinking in front of your children or grandchildren. There's a time and place for everything, and I truly believe that. But the problem was, with the Ketchup and Mustard Building, it wasn't appropriate, and it shut down. So there's already been a precedent set for that kind of entertainment. I didn't really have a problem, I guess I just didn't know back then, and now that I do know that it's not allowed here. And I, you know, I've grown up a lot since then, and I've learned a lot, and I see a lot of things that are going on around the world, and for me, protecting the children is important. And science shows that when a child is exposed to sexual content at a young age, it literally changes the chemicals in their brains. And that's what we're talking about here, right? We're talking about exposing children to sexual content when their brains haven't developed enough to understand what it is. I don't care about gender or your preferences, I don't care about any of that. You are welcome to be a freak. And some people might think I'm a freak. Some people might think that I'm white trash. Some people may have a lot of things. I've also been called a white supremacist, which I thank you for, because for the last three years, being called a white supremacist, I have no problem if you call me a homophobe, even though I was motorcycling with my lesbian friends over the weekend. It's not about that, it's about you advertising to all ages, and then being called to task on it and backing up. So now, is it, if it's not appropriate, why do you still have all ages on many of your posts? So you can't have it both ways. You cannot. And I'm just asking that you be honest and run your business the way that all the businesses on Main Street are asked to run it, within the ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, Bill Robey, the executive director of the Eldorado Community Foundation. I'm just looking for a little clarity in understanding what adult establishment is. Is it something that's occurring within the facility, or is it just a photo of somebody's butt cheek? I think it has to go a little bit beyond just the photo. But I really want to blow this out a little bit and focus on what we're really talking about here, and that's children. And within Placerville and Eldorado County as a whole, we've got some really big issues when it comes to youth. There's over 654 youth that are homeless tonight. There's over 400 that will go to bed hungry. There's children that are in custody and CPS, children that have been taken through the court system with Casilla Dorado. So we talk about the welfare of children, the trauma that children face. I understand what some of the individuals are that are speaking about the green room, but I think that Jennifer has moved to address that, to make it adult-only, and I really would like to see us focus on those other children, which number in the thousands that need our help. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Still open forum? Just real quick, I wanted to correct the record from a previous speaker. We are not in occupied Mexico. We are in conquered Mexico. Mexico, on February 2nd, 1848, signed over to the United States under the Treaty of Hidalgo, California, Nevada, Utah, New Mexico, most of Arizona, Colorado, and parts of Oklahoma, Kansas, and Wyoming. Period. This is the USA.
Any other comments? Seen none? Oh.
I just want to briefly share, if you look in international law, treaties that are done after conquests don't have a legal date. So, different people.
Everybody, hold on. All right, one person at a time. Thank you.
Good evening, Board and council members. Bob Price, been, lived in Eldorado County for over 30 years. Apologize for not having a lot of the background information. I heard about this late last night. Been working all day, I didn't get a chance to review ordinances, regulations, and laws. My former life, I worked for the government in nearby county for 32 years as a governmental regulator, a peace officer, and other things. So when I heard about the things going on, and I saw this, this letter that was sent in, and it was submitted tonight by a clerical person or something, it talks about programs that were going on at the Green Room, and I heard that there were some sort of drag shows or something going on with stripping and all that stuff going on. So I, I'm not, I'm a little bit, I'm not sure what programs are. And if they didn't mean to put programs, and it should be shows, then that should have been reflected. If they put programs down to intentionally deceive because they are doing shows, you know, who's ever seen Peep programs or Peep nudity things? So it's one of those things where I don't know how any of this stuff could even be legal. Does Eldorado County have any strip joints at all around here? And if it's just going to be limited to commercial zoning, then what's the difference between a sushi place or a coffee place? Or the, like in Sacramento, they had some of the automotive wash places that had scantily-clad women out in fongs and everything, washing and drying cars. So I think we're going down a slippery slope if we're and drying cars. So I think we're going down a slippery slope if we're going in this direction of allowing these different types of shows to happen. We mentioned history early on. If you look at the history of Placerville, we had brothels, we had opium dens, we had everything you could think of. And they pretty much disappeared, except probably for the bars. The reason for that is because families move in, norms and standards are set. When you have norms and standards in a society, that's what holds it together. Societies that lose their norms and standards deteriorate. So everybody's saying, oh, well, you're bigoted, you're prejudiced if you disagree with our view. Well, you're actually bigoted and prejudiced against people that have societal norms. So I just wanted to say, I'm kind of coming in not knowing the full detail of what's going on, but if it involves people stripping, and if it's a place that now is raised at 21, well, what does that, what does that really mean? Can Carry House or other places then start having, you know, gals dressed in pasties and thongs going around and serving to help boost their sales? Or can an art place have, you know, people holding stuff? So I will promise to do more research on it, but if it's going where I think it's going, I think it could be devastating for the area. And if you think it only impacts the people of Placerville, I live outside of Placerville, but when you start to do this balkanization, you're going to start having people boycott Placerville. So keep it where it's always, everybody can come from everything, and they're accepting. Tourists can wander in and out of any one of these buildings here. We're not known for having, oh, you want to stay away from the Green Room because they have this going on. Just keep it the way it is. Once you start to do this polarization, and there's people that are speaking up for it, a fraction of a fraction of a percent, that's all there in society, and they have big bullhorns and the media's behind them. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Julie Robinson. And I think one of the problems today is we've got some smoke and mirrors going on, and we've got some apples and oranges going on. So what Mandy was talking about was a burlesque show. Yes, burlesque shows or adult shows. I know Gavin's show was a burlesque show, but the one that happened on a Sunday brunch was a drag show. A drag show is not a burlesque show. So in a drag show, men typically wear women's clothes and sing songs, basically mime songs, that, and dance. That's, that's it. And historically, men acting as women is not a new thing. When you think of all the William Shakespeare actors, that was usually the case, the men in women's roles. I've got British heritage, so I grew up with pantomime. Pantomime usually happened at Christmas time, and always the funnest character in pantomime was the middle-aged man who was the main female role. So drag or dressing up, it's not a new art form, and it's definitely not as sexual as it's being portrayed right now. In fact, I think it is more sexual, the shop on the corner there that has ladies with no clothes on. I mean, they're just these skimpy, not underwear. They're more like sex stuff, and it's uncomfortable to me. So to me, that is a bit more offensive than people who consented to go to a show that they knew men were going to be dancing and pretending to be women. Everybody knew they were men. Nobody was surprised. And I think that's all I got to say. Although, maybe if, there's people who would hear, if they could raise their hands to let us know if there was stripping at that event. Did anybody who was there at the event see stripping?
There was not.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Sage. I am a 28-year-old freak. I and my community need somewhere, literally one day a month. One day out of the entire month where we can go and know that we will not be assaulted for dressing the way we want to dress. I've lived here a while. A lot of people are great, a lot of people are not great. A lot of people make me severely uncomfortable. I can't go dressed how I want to dress to Liar's Bench, or PJ's Roadhouse, or the Public House. I have to go to the Green Room, and it's just, it's really important. It's really important that we have somewhere to be ourselves, one day out of the whole month. I think we can handle that. It's 21 and up, it always has been. We're not interested in your kids, we want to be left alone.
Hi there. My name's Robin Gunning. I have family that lives in the community, but I live in Sacramento. But I was at the Green Room drag show, and I brought my nine-year-old. And there was no stripping, and it was a family event, and there was no excessive drinking, because I don't drink. And I was really proud of Placerville, that they had an event like this, so that, so that the people who are queer in this community can be seen and be validated, and not shut down and bowled over and harmed by the other residents who do not agree with the lifestyle. Like, you don't have to agree with the lifestyle, but you should at least give respect to the people who live in your community, no matter how different they are. That's all.
Thank you. If you're gonna, for, going forward, if you're gonna speak, why don't we go ahead and queue up so we know, so I'm not calling last call every, after every person?
Hi there, my name is Erin. I fully support the Green Room Social Club. I'd just like to say that, you know, it's been said by a couple people, but Placerville is for everyone. That's literally everyone. Drag queens, people in the LGBTQ+IA+ community, conservative Christians, and everybody else in between. It's literally for everybody. I was not at the drag bingo brunch, but I think it should be put on record that when issues started to arise with the Pride Night coming up and the, all the things, I did see on Facebook that the Green Room had posted that they had corrected the issues with the microphone being projected out to the street. They corrected that. Also, their website reflects that the specific events that may not be appropriate for children while being a all-ages venue, the events that may not be appropriate for children, it does reflect that they're 21 and up on their website, on their Facebook page, and they've made it known that those events are 21 and up. Again, I just want to say, I live in the community, I'm an ally, and I fully support the Green Room Social Club. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Kirk Smith. On this topic, I'll just echo Bill Robey. I think there's a lot of issues, if you're concerned about children in this community, that exceeds this one. As far as the ordinances, we have one related to sound, and the Green Room did suggest that they changed that. So that was an aberration, it won't be back. But what prompts me to come up here is the workshop you have for tomorrow night. I looked at the lists of the private collateral sewer lines, all of them for serving some 80 homes in town, and only one identifies a specific person. It says Sacramento Hill, in parentheses, Tom Smith. And then inside says that Tom Smith engaged in an illegal sewer line. So let me, if you're gonna pick on somebody, try somebody who hasn't been dead for 11 years, if you're gonna defame them. But just to let you know, it was constructed with a Calvet loan, which required compliance with local codes. We had to blast with dynamite to get a sewer line down, because the top of the hill is lava caps. For what you newcomers don't know, is that in front of the house, you couldn't put a sewer line straight down the hill, because there were two giant reservoirs built by John Kirkin, E.F. Bishop, in 1852 to 1872, that provided water for this county that enabled Placerville to go from being called Dry Diggings to Placerville, as in plaster mining. So that's why we couldn't put it straight down there. And it was connected next door to the sewer line put in by Les Frost, who by training was an engineer, he was the local postmaster, he built his house, and that's what it was connected to. So that covers 1,200 linear feet. That's how it got in there. But inadvertent or sleazy, it just doesn't look right. That's, note my objections for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Hi, my name's Thomas. The lady that spoke earlier was my wife. As a veteran, under the oath you take, it's for everybody. So I fought, I went to Afghanistan, I got blown up. To come back to a country where people just want to alienate people for whatever reasons, you can say that you're trying to do it under--
Sir, if you could address the council--
I am addressing the council. Just, I'm hearing chattering over here.
I understand.
Just like Al Capone, you couldn't take him out with, with what he was doing. You went around and said, oh, hey, check it out, we got him under tax fraud. It sounds like the people that oppose the Green Room haven't gone to any shows. You're worried about Main Street and children when the entirety of Main Street closes between 4:00 and 6:00, and these shows happen afterwards. We all know Main Street's a ghost town after 6:00. So why, I don't understand why you guys are worried about children being exposed to this when not only is it 21 and over, but nobody's on Main Street. So I don't have a problem with Green Room. Those that do, need to check themselves.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments, bring it back to council. Pierre, I know you had a discussion with the Green Room Social Club. You want to just give a brief readout on that?
Sure. Basically, staff did meet with the owner of the Green Room and had a detailed, in-depth discussion of exactly what these shows comprised of. And at the end of our discussion, without actually seeing the show in person, it was our determination that it did not rise to the level that would have required what we would call an adult business license for, for a, for a type of, for this type of business. So there, it's still staff's, staff's interpretation that they're in compliance with their conditional use permit as an event center.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other comments from anybody? All right, moving along then. We don't have any items pulled from the consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, 8.2, written communications. I think we do have a couple.
Mr. Mayor, the items that were submitted tonight to you will be available for public inspection. And I'm not aware of any other public comments that were received.
All right, thank you. All right, again, there are no items pulled from the consent, no ordinances, no public hearings. So we will go to our one discussion and action item, which is our water sales report for calendar year 2022. And Mr. Warren, sitting in the big seat tonight, will have this for us this evening. So thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Mayor Saragosa, and members of the council. So yes, this is an informational item tonight. As you know, we purchase water from Eldorado Irrigation District and sell that water to our residents, delivering it through our pipes, meters, pumps, and valves. Some of that water goes unaccounted for, and the reason for that is we have to flush dead-end lines. These are lines that actually don't have laterals toward the end of them. Periodically, we also have, when there's a repair, they have to flush the lines. We have to test the water. And then we have leaks. And actually, 2017 back, we had quite a few leaks. And you might have noticed on the graph on page one, we purchased 1,473 acre-feet of water. We sold 937 acre-feet, and 536 was unaccounted for. One of the other things on the unaccounted water also includes is fire suppression. So if our fire district needs to put out a fire and use our water, that's a part of that as well. So important part of that. But most of that is leaks. So you can see that in 2017, we had 36.38% unaccounted for water, which is very high when you consider that a city of our age with a properly operated, maintained water system would have unaccounted water about 15%. So over double at that point. But there was a lot of deferred maintenance for years until Measure H, Measure L came along. And then you can see, in 2018, we made progress. We went from 36.38 to 24.8, or 301 acre-feet of unaccounted for water. And then it really plummeted down to 9.93%, or 93 acre-feet in 2019. So as we were doing those Measure H, Measure L water line repairs, you can see that it was really paying off at that point. And then it actually kind of crept up a little bit. So we know that EID replaced four of our bulk meters, so we're actually serviced by 10 bulk meters. But the four that provide 73% of all of our water were replaced in 2019. Over time, meters tend to slow down and measure less water than actually is passing through them. And so we think that because of better readings, our unaccounted for water actually increased. The delta between the water we purchased versus the water we sold rose a bit. So it actually creeped up to 15.96 in 2020, 17.32 in 21, and 20.43 in 22. Still very good, though, considering the age of our system and whatnot. So the good news is, on page two, the graph there, you can see that since we've really aggressively started replacing our water and sewer lines, we're saving between $64,000 and $124,000 in water purchase costs. And then cumulatively, the red bar, you can see that over the five-year period, we actually saved almost a half a million dollars, $473,000, and we saved 100, excuse me, 1,668 acre-feet of water, which is great for conservation. So that's the good news. We continue to strive to continue repairing our lines, and I just want to recognize our Public Works Department, as well as our Engineering Department, the great work they're doing, Measure H, Measure L, and of course, the council and the voters who passed Measure H, Measure L. It's really making a difference. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Dave. Any questions? Yeah, it's really good news.
I assume that, you know, when you look at 2017, and if you said this, I'm sorry if I didn't hear it or not, but we, we, what, that's 1,400 acre-feet? Is that how many acre-feet? Is that number an acre-feet?
That's what we purchased.
Yeah, 1,400. And then we're down tier to 1,100 and some change.
Right.
And I'm assuming, though, some of that's conservation, you know, and, and more efficient this and that's and all that stuff. But since we're not leaking as much water as we used to, we're not buying as much water as--
That's, that's very true. Good point.
Okay, all right, all right. And then, of course, if you do have some loss, as the blue number gets smaller, that percentage is going to go up. It's, I mean, something obviously we need to fix. But if you look at kind of across the graph, I mean, it's up a little bit from previous years, but it's below whatever, 20. I mean, it's 20.43, but you know, what's .43 amongst friends? So that's a good thing that that's staying somewhat steady. So anyway, okay, thank you.
One of the other things I wanted to point out real quick is, like other water agencies, if someone experiences a significant leak, we try to work with the customer, and essentially what we do is, as long as they repair the leak, we will split the difference. So we eat 50% of the overage, if you will. So if a customer was over, compared to prior year 2,000 cubic feet, we would eat 1,000 cubic feet, and they would pay the other 1,000 cubic feet. That 1,000 cubic feet of, that we eat accounts towards our unaccounted for water. So that's part of the mix. And we have, like our, our water system, our private water systems are old too, and need repair.
Understood. Thanks, Dave. Jackie?
I just wanted to point out, one of the conversations Dave and I had, to kind of put this in perspective for myself as well, is the older systems in good working condition have an unaccounted water rate of 15% on average. So we're not going to get down to zero. But, you know, 15 is probably going to be that average, and I just wanted people to understand that.
All right. We'll go ahead and open up this item for any public comment.
Sue Rodman, community member on Measure H, Measure L. And I'm really proud of what Measure H and Measure L has been able to do for the city, and really proud of our engineering and public works people who have implemented all of the projects that we have recommended. In fact, they bring their projects to us, and we say, oh, this is going to be great. So, but to get these water lines fixed, and Jackie's right, you don't ever get to zero, because like Dave was saying, you've still got to backflush lines, you've still got to fight fires, so it's never going to be zero that you lose. But-- Leo Benikoshan, I've said this before, I'm continuously amazed, the little city that can, how much you do with so little. And I just love the service attitude of your staff. I don't mean to disrespect my hometown, but I need to go talk to them because I got a water bill for $2,000 extra based upon new meters, and then they recalculated the measurement errors that you described. And it's like, Jesus, is that okay? So, you guys take care of everybody, and it's appreciated. Thank you.
Bring it back to the council.
Any further comments here? I know this isn't receiving file.
Yep.
All right. Seeing none. Uh, great work, and yes, hopefully we can keep working on that number, but it's a pretty good number.
It's a good number. It's a good number. Small town.
All right. Uh, so with that, we will move to item 13, with our council reports from other agency meetings. And the first one is El Dorado County Transit.
We didn't meet?
All right. Uh, El Dorado County Transportation Commission.
We meet on the first.
Yep. Lafco?
We meet on the 23th.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. We meet tomorrow.
Meet tomorrow. All right.
Yes, thank you.
That works. SACOG, we did meet. It's, it was an interesting conversation because we had the four-county round of funding that we will soon be joining in 2025 as a six-county round of funding. And there were definitely Sacramento County, I think not Winters, one of the cities in Yolo County, Woodland, weren't happy with the way, you know, because they, they were basically not shut out, but, well, actually, Woodland, I think, was shut out, and Sacramento County didn't do very well. And so, there's always that push and pull whenever you have, when your hometown jurisdiction doesn't get anything about, then how unfair the, the process becomes, and it will become even more competitive when it goes to a six-county round of funding, which we will still have input into through EDCTC and PCTPA for Placer County. But it will, this is something for us to keep our eyes on as we go forward because it will become much more competitive as we go forward through those six. And that's just for two classes of, of federal funding, uh, so that it isn't for all, all funding. So, EDCTC will still get money directly that we will be able to work through, but there will be some funding pots that the federal government now is mandating that has to go through your metropolitan planning organization, your MPO. And so, there is a choiceness. You know, it's one of those things where if we all could just do what we wanted to do, it'd be great, you know? Tax if we want to so that we don't have to do grant money. Or we could, you know, have control of our own, our, our own future. But unfortunately, that's not the type of government that we have, and so, or fortunately, actually. Uh, and so, we do have these, uh, items that we have to endure sometimes, which aren't always in our favor. But I do think SACOG has tried to work through this as, as well as possible. Again, Woody, uh, from EDCTC, our executive director, is actually the, the chair of the working group, uh, working on this four to six counties. And then Wendy Thomas, our supervisor, is chairing on the elected member side. So, we do have really good representation for El Dorado County and Placerville, but we will continue to monitor that as we go forward. Uh, okay, Pioneer?
We meet on the 25th.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Placerville Fire Safety Council.
We haven't met since the last meeting.
All right. Uh, two by two, we have not met. Opportunity Knox, Continuum of Care. I think I've seen a few emails of special meetings.
We have a special meeting tomorrow to discuss the Moratorium of Understanding Memorandum of--
Mo--MOU.
For the Permanent Navigation Center. So, this is the one that will be built in a couple years on the former sheriff's site. So, it's not the one that exists right now. Um, and then I did volunteer to be on the Committee for Developing the MOU for the Temporary Navigation Center, including referral process that is currently, um, operating.
Thank you for that, because that's very important for, I think, the city.
Yeah. It has a lot of county representation, but I will do my best as the one city member on there.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, I will go ahead and open up item 13 for any, uh, public input. All right. Seeing none. Uh, we will go ahead and move to item 14, uh, which are any requests for future agenda items. Any requests?
Um, I just had a request that we do an LGBTQ pride proclamation at our first meeting in June, similar to we've done in previous years.
Yep. I don't see any, anything wrong with that. We should be doing that. Um, okay. Any, seeing no discussion, that's, we'll work with Regina on that.
Sorry, was there a majority consensus on that?
Yeah, everyone, okay?
It was an addition vice president.
Yeah, I think, I didn't hear anything, so I figured. But, all right. Thank, thank you, Mona. Uh, City Manager and Staff Reports. Seeing none. Actually, Rebecca, I was going to ask you just if you want to give a quick update on our, our, the latest, our, our latest sinkhole, but with a lot of work going on up at Thompson's.
Yes. We love surprises. We've encountered a few underneath the surface, but Veer Camp is working through it. They've done a great job. We have already replaced, by we, I mean, under the Caltrans portion of the contract, they've already replaced the failed culvert. They have backfilled and brought it back up to grade. They're now replacing some utilities within the intersection that also sunk as a result of the entire intersection essentially sinking, and they're working their way through. We hope to bring everything back up to grade and be able to reopen Forni Road to traffic in two-way, um, by Friday. That's if everything keeps going the direction it's going. But, yeah, we wanted to clear out of the way, I know that some folks up there have some decent-sized Memorial Day sales, and they really are kind of feeling the impact of the construction.
Understood. No, and that's actually faster than I thought it might get done, so--
Same here.
Yeah. So, that's great news. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. With that, upcoming items, I'll let people read that on their own. Uh, so, at 7:00, I will go ahead and call tonight's meeting to adjournment. Thank you all.